Mr. Bo.
Here.
Thor.
Here.
Ms. McGuire.
Here.
Mr. Harding. Ms. Thomas.
Mr. Davenport.
Here.
Ms. Corbin. We've got a forum, we've got a meeting. Okay, moving on with the agenda, we have a motion to approve the minutes of September fifty thousand.
Move Deatley?
Moved by Deatley.
Second.
Seconded by Courtney. Any corrections to the minutes of September fifth? There being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most opposed? Motion so carries, thank you all. Okay, next item is the President's Report, Civility Pledge. We've got a small audience this evening, so I'll take the pledge this evening. Civility pledge, in the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community, and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective. Okay, uh, next item. Annually, the Chamber of Commerce has a awards dinner in which they have asked each municipality that they represent to nominate somebody for the Volunteer of the Year Community Award. Uh, in the past, Mr. Hoff has been a recipient of that award. And Mr. Florence back here has been a recipient of the Year Award. Uh, well, by the way, yeah, individuals. Well, that time of year, the change was looking for somebody. And I think we should nominate the editors of Sleepy Hollow legend. CM Parker and Kathy Eaton. Those two have been doing yeoman's job of keeping our newsletter going for a long time. And we never see them. They are volunteers that work in the background and never get the recognition I think they deserve. So I think that this is one way, one evening, we can bring them out to the limelight and embarrass them. No, we wouldn't do that, but I mean, I just at least let them know how much we appreciate all the time that happened today, given that all of the years. And I, I don't know how many of you remember when the newsletter was memographed? Now, that was the clerk's job, piping it together and memorizing, telling it out to the residents.
It would be a short newsletter nowadays.
That's why CM Parker and Katie Eaton are there today, to be sure it's not a brevity. Uh, the consensus of the board then will nominate Kathy and CM. I will notify them and they will be properly rewarded on seventh of October at the chamber meeting. Okay. Uh, President's Report, I believe that's it, Court's Report.
I have no report to make.
Well, thank you, Tony. Plan and zoning, have no report. All right. Attorney, nothing for the attorney at the moment. Engineering. Uh, the engineers have reviewed and approved a comment permit that was submitted a couple of weeks ago. We have a motion to so approve the recommendation from the engineers to our comments permit.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Thor and seconded by Deatley to approve a comment work permit number one, eight, eight, nine, one, two, nine, nine. Okay, any comments, questions or discussion about this? If you look at the review plans, you'll notice it's going for a rather sensitive area of the village. But it is underground boring, and the engineer has put down a number of specifications and requirements that they want. So we will be watching this. Look, it's gone along sleepy cream to the north of Linnmore, north of Willow.
At what point, or have we already notified residents whose backyards will, this will be a back, I know this minimal contact, what's that?
This will be comments.
Comments reaches out, okay.
Reaches out to you.
And then one little question, I'm just wondering if this is something that normally happens, but I noticed their proposed timeline, they said approximately twenty-four days. But the dates they list are only eleven, is it just a cushion that they put in or?
That was one thing I was going to suggest, that we might let them know that they're beginning it at the beginning of Halloween festivities. They said they may begin as early as the twenty-fourth of October. Halloween is the twenty-eighth. And all that work is going to be along Thurlbred and Sabatino Park. So I don't know, you know, we start talking manholes for our underground cable, there could be a couple of holes that they might leave open. We might just send them a note that Service Club's Halloween festivals are that weekend. They might want to think it's putting it off till Monday, the twenty-ninth and third.
Is that something?
I will relay that to them when they send them that.
Thanks.
Okay, on the permit itself, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most opposed, so carries. Comment, now they can continue. Uh, Director of Finance, Mr. Vena.
Request a motion for the approval of the warrants in the amount of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, sixty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents.
I move.
Second.
Moved by Courtney?
Yep.
And seconded by Mark to approve the warrants of September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand, let me expand that size there so I can read it. Hundred and fifty-eight thousand, sixty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents. Any additions, deletions, comments or questions? Vena, I hopefully. Mr. Dally.
Aye.
Ms. McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Ms. Bo.
Aye.
Off on the books, no negative votes, the motion so carries.
Well, I was able to transfer all five hundred thousand dollars to payment without any wire transfer fees or anything like that. We get a hard copy check and we're able to deposit it to a bank account. So that's a just a couple hundred bucks right there. Uh, it's now earning its four point something percent interest as of last week. Um, the light pole had been dropped by a hit from one driver, and it was about eleven thousand dollars to replace that. Um, I contacted our insurance agency and we only have a thousand dollar deductible. They've got all the paperwork, and so we're going to get a check for a roll over ten grand to help reimburse us. And the furnace, the furnace on the village hall side was put in in May of twenty nineteen. Well, apparently some kind of it from the flue pipe dripped down and I think the circuit board and short circuited the board. And that was fourteen hundred dollars to replace, and it was kind of not much of a choice at that point. It's, um, and coming in and it's been sixty something degrees in here. And so, um, we did that and I came this morning and it was still cold. So apparently the, um, switch on for the door wasn't, um, completely compressing it. And so the furnace wouldn't kick on. So the technician came back and was able to fix that. So, um, that's all I got.
Okay. Thank you, Gene. Uh, comments? Not any public comments this evening? No, all right. And we'll move on to the trustee reports. Uh, trustee of municipal roads and parks, Mr. Harding is out of town. But the street pole replacement taken care of by Kyle and Eugene, all taken care of. So the insurance on that will cover it, and you've got the pole coming in and installed shortly. Okay, uh, street program, that should be getting off in the next couple of days if they haven't started already. I have noticed some paint markings along the side of the road in various places. They will be here someday shortly. Uh, finance, Mr. Thor.
Um, the only thing I've got is I have heard from some residents wondering when the next finance committee meeting will be. And we're waiting until we get the results of the audit back before we're going to schedule it. So, um, I've responded to them, and it should be sometime around the beginning of October, but it could be the middle of October, we don't know exactly when they're going to get here. Um, and other than that, I know that Eugene has a few things.
My.
Is that it?
Yep.
Please, spill my thunder, thanks. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Uh, water insurance, Mo.
Uh, I've met with a resident over on Van Tassel who indicated they were having some musty or metallic water. I addressed it with Jeff and Kyle, they, they wanted to know if there's any construction or work being done. There wasn't anything being done, they advised that he run the tap for about five minutes. That still didn't help it, so I went over, I tried it, and I brought water from my own house, because I'm actually just up the hill from him. There was a mustiness to it, a smell. Um, so we're trying to brainstorm, uh, it seems like it's an internal issue, but there's a few other questions we're going to ask with Jeff and Kyle and kind of figure it out. So it seems like it's isolated event, most people around him drink bottled water, so he hasn't been able to compare with immediate neighbors or even they have filtration systems on their taps.
Van Tassel?
Mm-hmm.
And Bogromal Drive or Court?
Uh, Bogromal Court and Van Tassel, right there on the corner.
Okay.
And they have two fire hydrants on either side. We're just wondering, and I might, might check in and see if those have been flushed recently and see if that might be anything with, because it would be close to their B box, so we're working on that. Um, and then on top of that.
Did, uh, water main replacement.
I'm sorry?
We did a water main replacement.
Okay.
It was probably more to the north of them. We found a one and a half inch hose attached to the water main supplying three or four houses back there.
And this was recently that we changed it?
Um.
The last?
Eight years or so ago.
Okay, so not in the last month or something?
Not in the last, no, this has been, you know, six, eight years.
Okay.
But I mean, that, we looped through that entire area, so there might be an issue left from part of that.
Okay.
But I said that, that was one of those fine ones where they showed up one day, didn't you get an inch and a half pipe going to your house? We used six and eight inch.
Yeah, yeah.
The contractors had used that years ago.
Okay.
And when we did run the line through and looked to Bogromal Court and up to Crane, then I don't know how many of those houses we had, uh, there was issues with vibration with the piping. Now, some of them were able to resolve it with the hammer jacks. And then I think we might have installed a pressure reducer valve or two over there.
Okay.
So.
I will keep on bringing those up.
Dark little corner.
Yeah. I was just wondering if maybe, I know that you, with the, with the Illinois EPA, you have to have a continuous loop now, and I'm, I know that there are some areas where there may be an end to the pipe. So we wanted to check with him if the pipes have been flushed, especially with the two hydrants right there, and them being on a hill, sometimes you just get those little pockets. And it did, it had more of an environmental smelt, and it really was very faint, but it was there. So, yeah, I'm learning all about water. And, uh, on how.
Remember, more people drown in water than any other liquid.
Oh.
He's right.
That would make sense, I suppose. Thank you for that, sharing that.
Just be careful.
Uh, also Wendy, Eugene, Kyle and Water Services have been doing a great job, they're setting up the water meter install project. We have fifteen remaining residents, and they've taken care of addressing the residents and we're in setting up appointments, and that's just replacing their water meter for the sewage readout. So, and other than that, things are going well, and I'll be working on Van Tassel.
Okay. And, sorry, Courtney. Uh, police and public safety, Mr. Deatley.
Uh, no report tonight.
Steve, uh, building and environment. Ms. McGuire.
I do, um, so it's been brought to my attention that there are six windows in the village hall that have, um, become either rotted out or separating from the building. So what I'm doing, I got one local company that gave an estimate this morning, well, they came out and did measurements this morning. I got another local company tomorrow, early morning, and then a national company tomorrow, late morning coming out. So I'll provide a full report in two weeks, um, with their estimates and ideas. And go from, go from there, and, and pictures as well.
All right. There we go. Thank you, Jenny. Uh, building zoning. No, Kelly's gone. All right, moving on to old business. All right, under old business, we have ordinance number. No, I mean, it's not a two yet?
No, we don't.
Uh. Then we've got the parking and trailer and RV ordinance to discuss. I believe this thing originally surfaced in May last year, had some questions. Chief had a couple of town hall style meetings during the summer to talk to the residents and address concerns on this. And it has now been brought to the board and given out last one for first reading. So tonight, any comments, questions, discussions, concerns do you have with the revision of the ordinance?
I'd like to comment one thing, I think the town hall style meetings were great, I think people felt heard. Um, I think they got to say and express what they needed to, whether it went their direction or not. I think most people walked away fairly happy, so that's, that's my input.
Yeah, I would agree, I was at the meetings just to listen, and like I said, good ideas from both, all the people who attended. Um, the chief offered good ideas, and there was a good exchange of back and forth. Um, and knowing like Jenny said, not everybody's going to be happy with everything, we understand that. Um, but, you know, we know we can't make everybody happy with everything, so I think the ordinance is very well written. I think it's a very good start, it's gave leeway to a lot of the people who live in town who have boats and RVs. And it also gave the chief and the department some control over things, so we can have a little better idea of what's going on and better control over it. So I think it's a, a great outcome of meshing of all the information and putting it together.
And became pretty fair.
Yeah, I would say very fair.
There are a couple of questions that we need to answer. One, the old ordinance called for twenty foot, the new ordinance calls for twenty-four feet.
Correct.
Are we in agreement with twenty-four feet? Are you going on a point?
Well, no, I thought, I thought that there was an issue with, um, any of the, uh, building and zoning folks going on property to measure a boat like that, so.
Well, that's part of it, if you were beyond end of this, uh, any boat that is in the village has to be registered.
Chief had a, it didn't, he not have a, a situation put in place for that kind of thing? So if anybody had question, they could call in and he could look it up in the computer, right?
And is there, was there a reason or was there feedback from the, from the residents that wanted to bring it up to twenty-four feet? Does that kind of more of a common size?
It was a little, and, and I'm, I'm a former boat owner.
Okay.
And, and people who have boats never get smaller boats.
Fair, okay.
And, and the twenty foot has been in place for quite some time. Um, and when you see most common boats today, they are a little bit over, more twenty-two to twenty-four foot is a more common size today. So that was why I, I changed, I suggested that change.
Uh, were there other changes? I wasn't, I looked up some of the old, excuse me, some of the old ordinance, I was trying to find the differences, but.
There, the differences are going to be somewhat difficult. Uh, one that will jump out at first is the beginning when he defines what a pickup truck is. Because the way it's written, if a class D plate on a truck, on a vehicle prohibits, prohibits it from being on a driveway, you're going to have a whole bunch of pickup truck owners in here saying, I got class D plates. The chief caught that was not in the origin.
Okay.
Okay? Twenty feet, uh, there were also discussions about deciduous trees or something, vegetation. Bunks or trailers had to be placed screened by deciduous screening or something, yeah, there was verbiage like that that was it. Now, it's, uh, it may be parked on a driveway if that driveway apron is within the building's set tax of the property. And it's gone by, right now, we're saying the first of December to the first of March. Uh, do we want to stay with those dates? I mean, most people with boats.
First of, yeah, that's eight, oh, eight.
And then one question too, that I don't know came out in those town halls, but a trailer versus boat length, did we decide on those two?
The boat length and the trailer will be combined.
Okay.
It's the total length from the end of the prop to hitch.
All right.
Wherever that, you know, goes is the length of the boat.
Sure.
And requirements is that, you know, that is all supposed to be recorded with the police department, so we're not having this question, what size boat is that? We're not trying, uh, to measure it from afar.
Yeah, and that was the biggest concern was Jeff Fleck was, he'd get a call and a complaint and go out and, and then he had to basically do this and figure out if the boat was twenty feet or nineteen feet or whatever. Um, so I'll have a form developed, I'll have a form circulated, and we'll have it on the website, we'll have it on the police department website. And then that way, that form can be just filled out and sent in, no charge, just, and then I'll have a database on all the computers in the car for patrol guys, that way, if we do get a call, we can look it up right away and say, yep, that boat's registered, that RV is registered, it's good, we know it's good. And, and now we're not wasting resources shaping stuff down.
Um, reading through it, I was just going to ask if there was, and maybe this is a question for Mark when he's back for structure, but where it had the overall restrictions, which is H, and it's not until there, when that's at the fourth page, where it says one and not more than one of any of these types are allowed. And it just seems to me there's so much detail with the description of all the types of vehicles for the previous four pages. I would like to see the overall restrictions go to the front, so that those are leading in, and then they get these descriptions of all the vehicles and know that there's that limitation, because I don't know, reading through it, like.
Like put the definitions first?
Yeah.
And then we go into the.
Yeah, well, not even so much the definitions, because we don't have to define them there, each of the, the segments, each of the sections, G for mobile homes, uh, boats. I would say we have the overall restrictions section as A, so H, move that up to the front. And then we go into the descriptions of all the different vehicles. I just think it's placed a little too far, that if people are looking it up, they see, oh, I can have a boat, oh, I can have an RV, oh, I can have this. You don't turn the next page and realize you can only have one. I mean, it will, they'll learn, and somebody will share with them, but yeah. Just a silent thing.
Yeah.
But I, I thought the description was very good, it was very detailed, and there was one, sorry. There's one spot under boats where it said that they shall be parked, and I thought that it should actually just be a maybe parked, because it was during the timeframe. Um. But never mind. Sorry.
We've got another one on, on the boats, and that is, uh, B, one, D, if you read that, it doesn't make a lot of sense in the placement. And talking with the chief, we move that up after A, then it makes sense. Is it B?
Move it under two, so it, so if you look underwater craft, where you have section one, and then you go down to D, for some reason, D really doesn't fit there. And I had caught it actually before, when I first looked at the ordinance, when it got sent out today. Um, so D really should go underneath number two.
Okay.
And that's basically to cover somebody who has, as an example, the reason we put it in there is somebody has a boat who is longer than twenty-four feet, and they want to, they want to work on the boat for whatever reason, for a short period of time.
Yeah, thanks, Marc.
That allows for it there, for them to call and get permission, yeah, go and do it, because I've already done that with residents in the past where they've called and said they, they need to work on their boat, and they call and, and we just allow it, and we make a note, so.
Remove one B or one D to two. And make it two A.
Yes.
And then we'll take care of that. Uh, then the consensus is we go to twenty-four feet instead of twenty?
Sure.
I see no reason not to.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, the dates are fine? On the date.
I, I can give you some speed, just some feedback as a boat guy.
Yeah.
My boat was never not put away and, and ready to be stored before November first, I can tell you that, just because if, if your boat freezes, when you've got a lower unit, you're done. Um, so it was always put away and before, so December first might be a little late, but that's, that's about the only, you know, suggestion that I would have. Um, I mean, by November first, everybody's done voting and we're in a snowmobile or whatever by then.
Um, the Leoponax is common, boats call away.
I think, but it used to be November first to April first, right?
December.
December first, okay.
Yeah, so it was always November thirtieth, and then it was when it had to be gone, December first is when it was prohibited, so. But yeah, I do think that's a, a little late for the voting season.
Thank you, well, November first to May first, actually. I mean, how many people have a boat out first to May fourth to work on?
Only if you're bringing it to a drum. Yeah.
And again.
Well, there, we had it, we had a couple eighty degree days in November this year that, that fell through, but then it got cold again, so nobody dropped it.
Right.
I figure by the end of the season, you're putting away, but I would be inclined to bring it, or let's see, it was April first, yeah, keep April first where they can have it, but then change it to November, because by, by early April, sometimes you have those warm days and people are.
I'd rather have it, yeah, April first, if we want to, yeah, if we want to spread it out, I'd rather move it back November first to April first versus December, because nobody's got their boat on in November.
Okay, change that one to November, uh, probably thirty-first, November first. Probably thirty-first would be the last day, and by then, we have to be out by November first. Okay, any other changes to send to Mr. Schuster to put this on the agenda for October second?
One, one other thing that I did notice that didn't make it to the, that was in the, the draft that I had sent to Attorney Schuster was, uh, I know a couple of residents, when we had the town hall, that we had talked about the snowmobile trailers and had made the comment that sixteen foot snowmobile trailer, you can fit four snowmobiles on it, not just two. And a lot of families, if they have snowmobiles, I know, will put four on the trailer versus two. Um, so that would be my only other suggestion, would take that number from two, not increase the length of the trailer, but at least allow them to have four on the trailer versus two. So.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
Okay. That's under F one.
F one D.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, with those caveats, so consensus is to have this sent to Mr. Schuster then. Okay. All right, we will see this again for a vote on October second with those changes. Uh, other old business for the evening. One quick reminder, Wednesday evening, five to seven at the Randall Oaks Recreation Center. KDOT will be having their over ninety multimodal, uh, phase one study presentation for the north side of the corridor. Uh, and then on the, that's, yeah, that's this way, the twentieth, the twenty-seventh, it's on, uh.
The pool.
A pool.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. And that's at six o'clock. Yeah, six o'clock on the twenty-seventh. At the pool.
That's a town hall too, so question and answer.
It will not be video, will not be streamed. Carpool.
And I am, I'm working with Andy Houchen on that to, um, handle overflow parking, they've already secured an agreement to park at the school.
Okay.
Plus the parking lot that they have. Um, we're working on overflow parking, it'll be Sabatino, I think, because I don't think there'll be much, but just in case, I want to have people prepared so that there's no cars on the streets.
Perfect. All right, any other old business come before the board? New business come before the board, move to new business, new business, the burn pile opening. What dates we want to set for the burn pile opening? Typically, we just do it the month of October, any weekends up to the twenty, once the fire is, they do the ban at twenty, twenty-eighth.
We did it early last year.
Yeah, last year.
That, last year we did it early because of the storms, and we had to. That, last year we did it early because of the storms and we had debris. This year, there's no debris, no storms.
Well, I had a tree down this weekend and it started.
So let's open it tomorrow.
Tonight would be ideal. It's laying in the middle of the yard. There's two other ones, but no, I had something, but yeah, we did a little early last year, but that would be nice. Maybe just a little early, I mean.
Well, we get it too early, it gets too big. One, two, three. If we opened it next week, twenty-ninth. That would give us one, two. Three, four, four weeks.
Yeah.
Before the uh, Fourth of July, or the Halloween festival, so.
Can you remind again what, just cause I know there's people watching, what, what is and isn't allowed?
Where's Mr. Nemic when we need him? He memorized that. Uh, no brush over no webs over four inches in diameter?
Sounds about right. Uh, no, no construction.
No construction debris, no housing material.
Yeah.
Uh.
Trucks, right? Your stops.
No stops.
No commercial.
No logs.
Are these rules on the website?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
Yeah, it used to be a sign up. Okay, off, god, and the consensus is we shall have uh, public works open the burn pile when they, before they leave work on Friday, the twenty-ninth. And that will give us for a good weekend after the uh, Halloween festivals on twenty eighth. Anything else come under new business?
Uh, I just have one little quick thing. Um, I just wanna give a shout out to the uh, First Annual Monster Dash. That is on there and I hope people come out and support it. And I hope uh, we have a really good turnout for it. Um, I think it'll be a fun time. So uh, everybody get out there and take a look at it and come out and have fun.
My daughter, her little best friend, uh, um, the cop's son, they're, they're running this and they're, they're really taking charge on it and it's back to Ranky's supporting it in the school. I'm wanting to go from there, so hopefully make some money for the Source Club.
Exactly.
Okay. Any other new business come for the board?
I will be adjourned.
I second.
Moving second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pause, pause, we are adjourned.